Good evening, everybody. It's Thursday, May 19th. I am Greg Huxman, Chair of the Gig Harbor Planning Commission. And I would like to call to order our regular meeting. First, we'll start with a roll call. Commissioner Bradbury.
Here.
Commissioner Griner.
Here.
Commissioner Soltes.
Here.
Commissioner Bennett.
Here.
Commissioner Brown.
Here.
And the city staff, we have Josh Decker, Michelle Thomas, Carl DeCemus, and Jeremy Hammer. Welcome, everybody, on this beautiful, finally sunny day. So let's dive right into the agenda. Of course, the first item is always approving the minutes from the last meeting. Are there any corrections or comments about those minutes? If not, I'm willing to entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
I move we approve.
I second that.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That was unanimous, so no need to take the nay votes. All right, well, let's jump right into the first item on the business agenda, and that is an update, an OPMA update from Josh Decker. So welcome, Josh. We appreciate the taking the time to come chat with us.
Yeah, thank you, Chair Huxman, for inviting me on here and giving me a few minutes to address the commission. So what I have here, I think you've all been sent a copy of it, but this is council's new guidelines and procedures that they adopted in April. And one of the things that they've added to this new version of council guidelines is a chapter on guidelines for advisory boards, commissions, and committees. So throughout this chapter, it'll reference advisory boards, and that's just kind of a catch-all term for all the various volunteer committees and commissions that the city has, including the Planning Commission. So I'm gonna walk through this chapter just really quickly. I believe the Planning Commission has bylaws, and I haven't looked at those recently. These guidelines will supersede bylaws anywhere that they conflict. So I don't know that there will actually really be anything that's really that conflicting to your bylaws, but if you see anything that seems out of place or unusual, just let me know and I can address it, but these council rules will supersede anything that's in your bylaws, because this is a council-adopted document, so just let me know if you see anything out of the ordinary there. So just briefly getting into this, and all advisory boards are formed by council by ordinance in the municipal code, all the standing advisory bodies. We currently have seven of them, and they're listed there, including the Planning Commission. Council may occasionally create ad hoc advisory boards. If that happens, they can do that by resolution, but that won't really affect what Planning Commission does for Planning Commission business. Each advisory board, when it's formed, has a scope of work that's in the municipal code. The Planning Commission is a little bit unique, because it doesn't really have a chapter that says Planning Commission, and here's what the Planning Commission does. Planning Commission is referenced kind of throughout the municipal code, based on different code chapters and you know, where it comes into play. So there isn't like a mandate for the Planning Commission. It's established by code, but it's its function is determined in the individual chapters throughout the code where the Planning Commission is applied. So each advisor board can develop work plans, annual work plans. You can discuss as a group what you want to work on, what you think you should be working on. A lot of the times, that's already prescribed by council, particularly for the Planning Commission. The city council, like with its plan doc, it will tell you pretty much what you're going to work on. But you also have the option to create a work plan of things that you want to get done. Those work plans will be approved formally by council, and they'll be implemented and carried out under the mayor's direction. In this chapter, you'll there, you'll see a few different references where it will say carried out under the direction of the mayor or subject to the mayor's direction. That is kind of a code phrase for saying, we need to make sure we have staff time, because that's the responsibility of the mayor, to make sure that city staff has the time to to do what's being asked of them, and that's something we can actually take on. So that's just kind of saying, you know, we understand the planning commission has things they want to do. We understand the council wants planning commission to do those things. But we do have the caveat that the mayor needs to make sure that staff time is being balanced appropriately, that we're meeting all our other requirements. So if you see that, that's what that's alluding to. Residency requirements, the Planning Commission has its own residency requirements in the code. That is, everyone has to be a city resident, with the exception, I think, of two UGA members, up to two UGA members, if I remember correctly. So that this section doesn't necessarily apply to planning commission. Appointment process. Most of you will probably remember being interviewed by the Board and Commission Candidate Review Committee. City council got rid of all of their standing committees, so that committee doesn't exist anymore. However, when we do appoint new members, we'll form an ad hoc committee of council to do those interviews. So the process will be pretty much the same. So when your terms are up, we'll ask you to reapply, and then we'll have council do the interviews, and then council will make their recommendations and appointments. Appointment terms, those are for three years, and I don't think that's changed for you. You, Planning Commission may have been four years, a few years ago, but I think it's been three for a while now. And then if your term expires and we, and you're not re-upping again, you can stay in your position until we've actually appointed someone to replace you. If if you want to. I have vacancies. And let me see, I'm sorry, I should be probably be sharing my screen with you, so you can follow along. Let me see if I can pull that up. I think you all have a copy of this, but it might be easier if I just have it up. Sorry about that. Vacancies are filled the same manner as if someone's term expires. The new thing that council has added here is that the mayor now has the discretion to remove board members. If planning commissioners, if there's a clear violation of these rules, or something in the municipal code, or violation of OPMA by state law, so council has delegated that authority to the mayor, so I don't think we'll have an issue with that. I don't think that's something that we expect to come up, but in case there is some kind of issue that needs to be addressed, the mayor has the discretion to deal with that now. We have a section on the expectation of advisory board members. This is pretty standard. It just kind of is saying that we expect our planning commissioners to come to the meetings, be prepared, be engaged, be ready to join the discussion. Ensure that you're courteous and polite to the other commissioners and pretty straightforward stuff that we don't typically have issues with. Section 5.9 outlines the duties of the chair and the vice chair. Essentially, the chair functions very similarly to the mayor in a meeting, and staffs the meeting, resides over the meeting, calls the question, processes all motions, rules on point of order using Robert's Rules of Guidance, as guidance. And then the chair will sometimes serve as an official representative of the commission. If if that's needed outside of your your meeting times. One quick note of Robert's rules, and I think we touched on this somewhere else, too, is all of our committees and city council, we rely on Robert's Rules of Order as guidance for our meetings. But one thing that I like to stress is we never want Robert's Rules of Order to get in the way of conducting your business. So if you're trying to make a motion, and you're trying to make amendments, and you're not quite sure how to do it, don't get hung up on Robert's Rules of Order. Just try to get to the point where you want to get to with your commission. And then if you don't adhere strictly to the rules, that's totally fine. It's there. They're more for guidance and as a mechanism to make sure you get your your meetings done. We have a section on quorums. Just to be clear, sometimes some of our committees will have vacancies, and a quorum is always going to be a quorum of the number of people that are appointed, not the number of members of a body. So if for in some instance, if the planning commission is down to five members, a quorum would be three, so you don't have to have four members to meet that. Conflicts of interest, this should be pretty straightforward, but if the planning commission is addressing something that you have interest in or could profit from, then you would need to talk to your staff liaison and disqualify yourself from discussions on that. This section 512 on liaisons and representatives, this is a little bit new, too. The mayor will designate a staff person for each committee, commission, to be your designated liaison. That person is really, that's who you need to go to with any questions you have outside of your meeting, so for the planning commission right now, that's going to be Carl. So if you've got questions about meetings or procedures, go to Carl. Carl's going to be the one that goes to each of you to get view information, anything that the commission does that needs to go to other committees or council, that's going to go through Carl, so one of the things council wanted to change with this, with these rules, is to make sure that we really have that kind of flow of communication in place. So we're gonna probably throughout this chapter, we'll reference the liaisons a little bit more. Procedures, records, and minutes. Again, this just stresses, don't don't allow strict adherence to Robert's Rules of Order to impede the board in conducting its business. The clerk will provide for the taking of action minutes. And action minutes are defined for council up in Chapter Two, but Michelle does the minutes for your group, so you guys have that covered already. Meetings, advisor boards have regular meeting times. The planning commission has already set those for the first and third Thursdays, so those are all set. The commissions can have special meetings if they're necessary. This again is where we trigger that consent of the mayor, so if you want to schedule a special meeting, we need to double check with the mayor, make sure that that's appropriate use of staff time, so a lot of the time, the request for a special meeting will come from staff, because we have something we need to do with the commission. But we just need to make sure that the mayor is on board before we do those. And the same thing holds for subcommittees here in section 515. So I don't know if the planning commission uses subcommittees formally, but if if there is a need that comes up where you need to form a subcommittee to research something or work on something, those need to be cleared with the mayor, and they are subject to the Open Public Meetings Act. So if the subcommittee is going to meet on something, we need to make sure that it's a properly noticed meeting and properly open to the public. The next few sections are on communications, and I get a lot of questions from all of our boards and our council members on communications quite a bit, so council wanted to get something in writing to help kind of provide some guidance on that. Communications with city council. So your recommendations as a planning commission should be recommendations as a planning commission, and shouldn't be coming from individual council members reaching out or individual commissioners, reaching out to council members, asking questions, looking for advice, giving advice. It should be going through the planning commission as a body, or else you can contact your staff liaison and go that route. And the same, and it's the same thing goes the other direction. Council members should not be reaching out individually to planning commissioners to talk about planning commission business. They shouldn't be reaching out to you to give their opinion or try to give you guidance on things. So council's aware of these, and they should be mindful of them if you try to reach out to them. Communications with the public. Members of the public will reach out to you as planning commissioners. I'm sure some of you have probably been contacted by that. And that's fine to talk with people in the general public about what you're doing. But just be mindful when you're are reaching out to them that you're you're speaking to them as an individual planning commissioner and not on behalf of the planning commission, so so we're trying to avoid confusion about, you know, getting a message out there that this is what the planning commission wants, when it may not necessarily be what the planning commission wants.
If, if finally interrupt with a comment on on 517, I don't think that's what those words say. And I have a real difficulty in understanding what is meant by the words in 517. If what you're saying, Josh, is the intent was to say that individuals should not represent themselves as speaking on behalf of the planning commission, I think that would be a nice straightforward way to say that. If it means something else, I'd like to hear about it now.
This, I think the intent of this is that we want to make sure that the message that is getting out related to the planning commission is coming from a staff member who's who's authorized to give that information, who's been coordinating with this, with other staff, coordinating with the planning commission, coordinating with council, and is in a position to speak on behalf. I think that is the intent of this, so I
What it says is, individuals should not represent themselves as advisory board members.
Yeah, I think this this sentence here is like, if you try, start reaching out to other people on behalf of the planning commission. So if you are contacting, you know, citizens in the public, trying to get input or information, you shouldn't be doing that as a planning commissioner unless you've been directed to do that. That's the intent of that sentence, so you shouldn't be contacting other commission members. You shouldn't be contacting like other cities or other agencies or or anyone outside of the planning commission saying, hey, I'm a planning commissioner, I want to know what you think, or I'm a planning commissioner, you know, what what are your policies on this? You shouldn't be representing yourself as a planning commissioner to others outside of the planning commission unless you've been directed to do so.
Well. So that, from what you said, that means that I can't say to my neighbor, the planning commission is considering the short-term rental policy in town here is, what do you think about it?
I that that is kind of what it says here, and I would say if you, if that's something, a conversation you want to have with your neighbor, I think that you should have your neighbor give their thoughts to the planning commission itself and not to you in particular. I think what council wants to see is they want the dialogue to happen in an open meeting. They don't want it happening individually outside of, outside of your meetings.
And I think part of the meaning there, if I could, Josh, is is to ensure that planning commissioners aren't out lobbying for their particular, particular stance or on a particular issue. And also, I know a part of it is is relative to a commissioner going out to another, say, another public meeting at another jurisdiction, if Pierce County or someplace like that, and representing themselves as a planning commissioner at the city of Gig Harbor, and then stating their opinion. And then in in so doing, they would, the perception would be that they are speaking for the city of Gig Harbor Planning Commission and the city of Gig Harbor, when they actually were not authorized or appointed to do such.
Yeah, that is a part of the discussion that council had when they, when they put this section in.
I'm wondering, Josh. I I can sort of see both sides of this, the the, I mean, the simple solution is to say to your neighbor, if they start talking about it, there is a public me, a public input opportunity on such and such a date, you can come before the planning commission, or you can send in written information. But I I would appreciate getting some clarification from the council to make sure, as Tom is questioning, is this what they really mean? Can I really? I mean, people know us, they know we're on the planning commission. So I don't generally solicit input, but people provide input to me, and it seems a little bit silly that I have to say to them, you need to stop talking and and come to the meeting.
Yeah, I I would not interpret that section, the section that way. I would interpret this as saying, don't go out and deliberately represent yourself as a planning commissioner to to try to solicit in, to try to solicit opinions or information. I think that's what council is trying to avoid with this.
I I really find that extraordinary, because I I would think the council would appreciate information that the commissioners obtained from residents of the town.
Well, I think this section may be something that council revisits in the future, but for now, this is what they've adopted, so we can talk to them more as we explore with our different boards and committees and run into issues with it, but I think it's just something that you should keep in mind as you're out there in the public, that you're not misrepresenting yourself if if that situation arises. Moving on in the communications section, this 518 is, talks about communication with about other advisory board members. This, you probably have had in your Open Public Meetings Act training, but this is kind of an important one. You shouldn't be communicating directly with each other on official planning commission business outside of your meetings. It's really easy to steer that communication into a serial meeting unintentionally or intentionally. And that's something that we're really trying to stress avoiding. Some examples of what we talk, mean when we talk about serial meetings. They're they're easy to create without really trying. So if, say, one planning commissioner emails another planning commissioner and says, you know, hey, we should we should create the short-term rentals policy, so that it requires that bunk beds are in all short-term rentals. And then that second planning commissioner has a phone call with the third planning commissioner and says, hey, what do you think of this idea? And then any one of those other three planning commissioners talks to one other and says the same thing. We've just created a serial meeting. So this is something that's in the Open Public Meetings Act. This is not a council policy, and it's something that is really something you guys need to keep in the front of your mind when you're having conversations outside of your meetings. Serial meetings, we tend to think of them as being something that can be created easily over email, so like if you send a group email to everyone, that's a really easy way to create a serial meeting. As soon as someone says, hey, I want to see bunk beds in all short-term rentals on an email to all of the commission. As soon as any other commissioner starts commenting on that, we've created a serial meeting. It's very, the the state law is very strict on this, and we need to be kind of monitoring that, and the easiest way to do that is if you have communications like that, that you want to get out there, just get them to your staff liaison, and they can distribute that appropriately, so that it can be discussed at your next meeting, so I know this is one that's come up with almost all of our committees in the past, and it's something that we need to be keeping an eye on. And 519 talks about lobbying efforts. So advisor board members are not to get involved in legislative or political matters unless on behalf of the planning commission, unless they're directed to do so by the city council, council or the mayor. So this isn't something where the planning commission can decide on its own. And when we talk about legislative, we're talking about state legislative matters. So if there's something that comes before the state legislature, the planning commission can't decide, well, we need to have our planning commissioners go and talk about this and represent the planning commission. That needs to come from the city council or the mayor that direction. And just in general, a planning commissioner is not allowed to speak for the planning commission on really any subject, unless that commissioner has been authorized specifically to do that. As individuals, you can absolutely go out and, you know, make, state your case and reach out to legislators and have that be known, but just not as in your capacity as a planning commissioner. And the last section in here is just about reimbursement of expenses. If something comes up where we have to do training or remote meetings or something that incurs an expense, we just need to make sure that the mayor has authorized that in advance, so and that is the extent of that chapter. I know there's some fairly ambiguous terms in there, but this is council's first attempt to try to give some clarity to to their expectations for their advisory boards. Any any other questions?
Gosh, if I may ask about 518. The, there's a similar paragraph in the section that applies to the council, council members, communications within other advisory bodies or communications within, between council members, right? You know what I'm talking about?
Yeah.
Okay, so my, I guess my question is, both of those reflect the an interpretation of the OPMA. Why are those provisions different for council members than they are for advisory board members?
Those are not different for council members. Council members are not, they have to be mindful of creating serial meetings, too, so anything they say to each other outside of their meetings, they have to be vigilant to make sure that they're not passing it along and creating a serial meeting, so.
But but the wording is different, Josh, and I'm looking at it right in front of me here. And it, for the council meeting, the council member communications, the wording seems to acknowledge that they will have contact with each other outside of meetings and provide some advice on how to avoid serial me, serial meetings. In the in 518, it's, don't have any contact with any council members outside of meetings. And I'm just raising the point that it seems like there are two standards there. And I don't think that's necessary, and I don't think that's wise, so I I'd like you to carry that comment back, if you would, to to the authors and to the council, because I I I I don't think it feels good that there should be one set, a set of language, one set of rules for the council members, one set for the advisory board commissioners.
I I can, I can take that comment back to council. There are, there are some differences. Council has designated city email, so it's a little bit easier for them to communicate official channels where we can, you know, make sure that they're not violating serial meetings that the planning commissioners don't have. So it's a little bit easier for staff to be aware of what's happening and prevent serial meetings from happening. But yeah, they're, they are not consistent, the two sections, so but the 518, I would stress again, though, that if you do have stuff that you need to talk about planning commission business outside of the meetings, your best option is always to go through your staff liaison. Let Carl know. Let Carl address it, because he can reach out easily to who needs to be reached out to, and he can get it in front of the commission. I see Commissioner Greenhouse, or end up.
I had a question. You talked about the terms of our positions on the commission, and I just looked it up, the planning, Gig Harbor Planning Commission, it says it's four-year terms, and you're saying that on this, that there are three-year terms, and this supersedes the other. Is that correct? I just want to understand.
No, I I misspoke on that one. The planning commission does have four-year terms per the code, so that's correct, yeah.
Okay, so it is for, it remains at four-year. Okay, okay, thanks.
Any other questions there, so?
Josh, for the record, I just wanted to clarify one thing also on on the terms of office. We, you had mentioned that that members of the planning commission could be from from the urban growth area as well, but I think that was, that I think that was true, and we changed it so that they must be residents of the city, except that anyone appointed to planning commission before August 27, 2019, who lives outside of the city can continue to serve until the expiration of their current term. So I think there was a change, I think, in 2019 that we made to that, so I just wanted to clarify it for the record since, since we're on.
Thanks.
And then also, Josh, were you going to talk about, and maybe I missed it, but were you going to talk about meetings and public comment?
Yeah, I can touch on that, too. So there has been a change to the Open Public Meetings Act that will go into effect on June 1st. Well, actually, this change has gone into effect already, but for every regular meeting that you have, there must be a public comment period of some kind, so I think your agenda, I don't know if it'll have it at the beginning or the end, but your agendas should have some opportunity for public comment on them, just, and that's only applies to regular meetings, so and then on June 1st, the provision for remote meetings has, is changing a little bit, so we will we will have to have a physical location for our meetings. But practically what that means for this group is we're still going to be meeting remotely online on Zoom. We just have to have a requirement so that members of the public that need to have a physical location to go and and view the meeting can actually come into the city hall and view it. But for commissioners and staff, we'll all still be remote on Zoom for these meetings after June first.
Carl, are you dead sure that that U G A thing did not go back to be allowed allowable? I mean, members that are in the U G A, I thought they had set it up. So yeah, they were going to disallow it, but then they had then reversed themselves. Am I out of date on that? I guess.
Let me look up the digital version of our code just to make sure that my paper copy is not out of date here. I'll I'll look that up right now, Mr. Soltis.
We we've gone back and forth on that a couple of times and one of the confusions with the planning commission is that a planning commission is defined in R C W thirty five, which is what we've traditionally referenced in our municipal code. But the problem is R C W thirty five does not apply to code cities, which the city of Gig Harbor is. So we've recently corrected that. So there has been a lot of back and forth on that and that R C W that doesn't apply is the one that mandated four year terms. And we've just continued the four year terms, even though we're not required now the four year terms anymore. So that was the point of confusion. And yeah, Carl, I do think that the code does now say that. Yeah, it does now say that there should, there shall be no more than two residents of the U G A on the commission.
Yep, I I stand corrected. At no time shall there be no more than two residents of the U G A serving on the commission. So that did change. And so we made the change in two thousand nineteen. And now we've made the change again in two thousand twenty back.
Yeah.
And my code, my paper code is out of date. I apologize.
There's another ordinance in two thousand twenty two that revises it yet again. So.
Clarify, Josh, that that the requirement for public comment begins on June first.
That's in place now. So that that should be either on your agenda or you should at least acknowledge it during your meetings that work that you are accepting public comment.
Starting June first, though, correct, Josh?
That's it. That should be, that should be in place now. That was one that the legislature had triggered to go in place. I think it was June first, but they changed something a few weeks ago that made it go into place sooner. So. Yeah.
That is news to me.
Yeah, I don't think you've had any. I don't know if you've been having public attendees, but if you do have them, then you should at least at the end of this meeting, acknowledge public comment time if anyone wants to comment.
Okay. And Josh, does that also, are we also required to take a written public comment?
No, that's that's not a requirement. When we do a public hearing, that's one of the things that we will typically do with a public hearing.
Yes.
For this O P M A requirement, you're not required to take written comments, just oral public comment.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
So how how does that change the? I mean, how does it change the workings of our meeting? And I asked that from with respect to previously when there was public comment, it was done because we were going to make a decision about something. And and so the ordering of the meeting was based on that concept. Now it's going to be allowed at the at every meeting and at the end, or where do we put it?
I'm typically what I recommend doing is just having it at the beginning of the meeting. The way the state law is written is that it needs to be done either at the meeting or before the meeting. And it doesn't have to be related to specific agenda items. It just has to, there just has to be an opportunity for public comment. So for most of the boards that I'm staffing, we'll just do a call to order, approve the minutes and then a generic public comment time. So people can comment on what's on their mind or what's coming up on the agenda, and then we'll just get into the agenda from there. So. This it's it's slowly getting rolled out to all of our committees and all cities are having the same issue where they're trying to implement the public comment period. So I apologize if I haven't got it on this planning commission agenda yet. It is, it's a new requirement and cities are adapting to it.
Next agenda will have it. We've got it drafted. We're just waiting for staff approval.
Yeah. So so for this meeting, I would just, you know, have have a period of time for public comment in case there are people that are on your on your meeting today that would like to comment.
So and it doesn't have to address an agenda item.
No, you don't have to do it like council does it for each agenda item. You can just do a general at the beginning of the meeting, take public comment and and that will satisfy the requirement.
Well, it's gonna be interesting to see how this plays out. You know, we we already have some long meetings, you know, to allow people to comment on something that's not even on the agenda.
Yeah.
You know, to me, this this could be a legislation that hasn't been well thought out. I mean, you know, we we're all volunteers. You know, we're we're donating our time. So it's going to be interesting to see how this plays out in 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 what it does to meetings.
Well, let me talk to Carl and Michelle after this, and we'll see what options we can come up with that might make that a little easier.
Especially on hot button topics, you know, the you know, if you get ten people, they can come to a meeting and and say the same thing every time. You know, that's adding thirty extra minutes to every meeting.
Yeah, it it does create the potential for that.
So we all want to hear from the public. We all have heard from the public on on the short term rentals, for example. And and there were many, many opportunities for that. So anyway, it will be interesting to watch and see what happens.
What I'm, I think his staff will be having discussions on how we're going to implement this and and what we can do to to make it so it's not going to interfere with the business that the commissions need to to do.
Okay. Well, thanks, Josh. Really appreciate you taking the time to give us that update. So you're welcome to stay, but I I imagine you might have more exciting things to do outside in the sunshine with your family.
All right. Thanks for having me.
Well, life is always interesting. So at this point, I will open the floor to the public and invite their input. I remind people that if you want to be identified, I think you press star six on your phone or raise your hand.
Star nine to raise your hand and star six to unmute.
Okay, thanks. And please state your name and your address and you will be given three minutes to talk. Michelle, do you have a timer ready? And at the three minute mark, Michelle will turn your microphone off or or put you on mute. So I I see that we have some members of the public here. So if anybody would like to speak, I see a hand up, but I can't on my screen identify who it is. Oh, Ann Jolie.
Yes, hi. I'm really glad for the opportunity to speak with you. I was listening to your last meeting and
Could you please state your your full name and your address, please?
Sure, it's Ann Jolie, J O L I E. My address is fifty two oh two Cromwell Drive Northwest Gig Harbor.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So last meeting you had, I was listening to it and I heard you, I I believe they pronounce your name Hookseema.
Close enough.
Okay, I heard you make a couple of comments about my property in particular. And the comments that you made to the rest of the staff there were completely inaccurate. So I'm asking, and I'm sure you probably got my letter or maybe the letter from my attorney for you to correct those comments and provide the rest of your staff with accurate information before they make decisions that are going to affect the short term rental owners in your city. You're unsure of what your comments are, I can remind you.
Sure. And and no, I haven't received any letter.
Okay, well, I wrote a letter to your whole board. And I also contacted the mayor and I've had my attorney also write a letter. So you had stated that the two houses that are on the spit were purchased for one point seven million dollars. And you alluded that they were purchased by investors who had no other intentions but to turn them into short term rentals. So I own those two homes. I did not pay one point seven million dollars for them. You're actually off by a million dollars. And you made that comment and then later on you stated that we get a thousand dollars per night per home. And this is when you were asking the members to up the fines that you were going to charge the short term rental owners in your city because you needed to make sure that you took a bite out of them. And again, that information is off by sixty percent. We do not charge a thousand dollars per night per rental. So I just don't know if you didn't do your research before you made those comments or if you were intentionally misleading everybody. But I was very, very offended by him. I'm not in your city. So for you to include my property or to put false information out there, you know, that's damaging to me. So I, you know, I don't know where you got the information, but it's it's very easy to determine how much somebody has purchased property for. And you could easily have looked and seen that we paid in the eight hundred thousands for that property and that it was for sale for, oh, a year. Nobody wanted it. And we bought it because we live here and we have family here and we donate it on a very regular basis. And the fact that we are making a thousand a thousand dollars per night per house is wrong. And if you're researching on V R B O or Airbnb, again, that's something you could very easily obtain. So I would like you to correct that statements that you made and make sure that the other people on your committee are aware that the decisions they made were based on false information. I'm done.
Time is up. Thank you.
Thank you for your input.
Is there anyone else? Okay. So Carl, would it be appropriate for me to
We just got somebody else.
Denise, your hand is up. Denise, if you're talking, you're muted.
Hello, can you hear us?
Yeah, I sure can.
Okay, I apologize. We're we're trying to figure out how this this Zoom platform works. So I could, I could certainly defer my three minutes to Ann. I think she makes some good points, but we're kind of coming in a little bit late on this, trying to understand it. And I I have felt that, you know, just watching some of the meetings that
I'm sorry to interrupt you really quick, Dennis. Can I get your name and address, please?
And seventy eight oh six hundred and thirty fifth Street Court Northwest Gig Harbor, nine eight three two nine.
Thank you.
And what is your full name?
Glenn Peterson.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah. And and one of the, one of the concerns that that we had was we did, we were surprised that the level of communications between the planning commission and the public, it seemed to be very limited. So as we were watching a lot of these meetings, it was, it was really quite frustrating because we wanted to share, you know, comment, provide insights. You know, we believe that there's a room for, you know, not just compromise and and collaboration, but to do what's really good for the city. One of the challenges that we have in in the harbor is that there is no, there's really no, you know, footprint for, you know, hotels and we wouldn't want that. We've got a beautiful location. And, you know, we think a big old hotel would not be the best thing, but if you were to come in to Gig Harbor and try to find a place to stay without short term rentals, it would be extremely difficult. So that's one of the things that that we wanted to share is that we think there's a lot more information and input that the 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 commission, you know, could benefit from. And we're hoping that we get more of an opportunity to share this. Unfortunately, this was a little bit of a surprise and I wish that I had been, you know, more prepared to provide input for the meeting. But just just know that we we do have the interests of of Gig Harbor in mind here and and we want this really to work out for everybody, but there there is, I think, a misperception about the the short term rentals, the lack of data. It almost felt like it's it's a cause in search of of something and or or maybe regulations in search of a cause. So I just wanted to share that with the with the planning commission and I hope we can have some, you know, just really good, you know, back and forth on this to really vet the issues. And I appreciate your time.
Thank you. I don't see any other hands up. So I'll close the public comment period then. And I just wanted to respond to the comment made by the first individual. Because of course, there was no intent to mislead anyone. I did base my comments on research that I done, I had done using Zillow. As the caller had indicated, that's where I got the information of what the purchase price was. In addition, the information that I got about the rental fees were taken directly from either Airbnb or V R B O. I'm not sure which I picked a a day in the future and and punched it in because I was trying to find availability. And that's the the number that popped up was it was a thousand dollars. I'd also like to clarify that I I did don't believe that I said, and if I did, I apologize that it was an outside investor, what my comment was that it was non owner occupied as it, and that's how it was being rented. So I just wanted to clarify those things to the other commissioners. So y'all can understand clearly that there was no intent to try to mislead you or influence your decision with wrong information. And I'd certainly be willing to take any questions from the other commissioners on that on that issue.
Right, it's it's my belief that that the properties on the spit are not within the boundaries of the town. Am I correct about that?
That's correct. And I believe I made that point as well at the time. And and it was in with respect to the whole conversation about whether or not people who were just investors that would be buying homes and converting them into Airbnb properties without the intent to live in them. And it wasn't addressed about whether they were not, you know, local folks or non local folks. And I'm 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 glad to hear that it was a local family that purchased that property.
Chair, as there is potential, and I don't know this for sure, but the commenter did allude to the fact that that there is an attorney involved. I would advise that we don't have too much more discussion about this on the on the record until we go a little bit more about what's what's been proposed or what has been submitted to the city.
Sure. Okay. All right. Well, let's move on then to the next agenda item. And that is, I will turn the floor over to you, Carl.
All right. Thank you, Chair. And I first, I I really appreciated Josh coming in and and providing that information to us. And I I do apologize. I Michelle and I, I think, were caught a bit unawares there as far as taking public comments today, we we were under the impression that we did not, that that did not take a Taking public comments today, we we were under the impression that we did not, that that did not take effect. Until June 1st, so that's what we were preparing for. And so we were preparing. And as it turns out, our next meeting would be a hearing anyway, so it really wouldn't affect the commission until the following meeting, so. Certainly didn't mean to catch you all off off guard and and I'd also apologize to the public. That's listening in that we we were unaware that that took took was taking effect today, so. I I take full responsibility for that and we will right the ship in June, so. If any members of the public have any concerns about that, please do contact me or Michelle. And we will certainly discuss with you. Any concerns you have, so thank you. All right, on to short term rentals. You all received in your packets this for this evening. A staff memo as a cover letter. That sort of introduced a draft of a staff draft. Of potential regulations around short term rental. A that that included sort of an amendment to. 1704, our definitions as well. And then also an amendment to. Gig Harbor Municipal Code 1714020 for short term rentals, adding them to the land use matrix. We also noted in the staff memo that there would need to be a slight amendment to. Chapter 1901 00003B. To include a new short term rental permit. As a type two permit application, that would be a minor amendment and we would bring that back as part of the ordinance. That we bring before you for the public hearing at our next meeting, if that's if that's indeed. The direction we go. And then as a follow up, you should have received an email with a couple of additional documents that were added to the added to your packets. One was a draft of a good neighbor policy. For your consideration and also we included. An article from MRSC regarding the effects of short term rentals on affordable housing. Which I thought was a really good article, very timely. And and a recent article, so it was, you know. Good data, so hopefully you had a chance to take a look at that. And then finally, we also included. Some edits from Commissioner Brown of the staff regulations. That he had submitted to us, so we included those in the packet a little late, just for your consideration. And so that that makes up the the full packet for today. Chair. I'm not sure how you want to approach. This meeting this evening, if you'd like me to. Pull up share screen with the with the draft regulations. I I assume everybody's had an opportunity to to read them. And so I don't know if you want me to kind of go through them sort of section by section, and then we have a discussion. In each section, or if you'd like to just open it up to the floor and we kind of have an open discussion. About the regulations themselves. And also, if we want to approach Commissioner Brown's edits. Or if you'd like him to just sort of present them within the discussion.
Yeah, I think what would be most efficient is to just start marching through your draft ordinance. I think you guys did a nice job. Of getting a straw man out there and then Commissioner Brown can bring up his points at the Jermaine time. And. So I. Y'all think that that's. Y'all comfortable with that? Okay. So why don't you go to screen sharing? There we go.
Okay, so here we go. Starting, oops. Can't move that, can I? Let's leave it there. So I start off, we start off with chapter 1704 definitions. Short term rental, so we we sort of pulled together an amalgam of. What we'd heard from planning commissioners as well as what we heard from the public. And also from the research that we that we did to kind of call together. A short term rental definition. That we thought or think sort of covers the intent of. What we've discussed. Over the past four or so meetings, and so I'm interested to hear. Commission's thoughts.
Comments? Think Commissioner Brown, didn't you have some input here? You're muted, Commissioner Brown.
I thought you wanted to get through the. Staff draft of the ordinance first.
No, I I think that that you should bring up the points that you, the edits you had recommended. As we marched through instead of coming back to it.
Can we can we simply put up the version that I provided that had the edits in red and yellow so that we can see them?
Yeah, I think that's fine.
Okay, one moment. Give me one second here, for some reason it's not allowing me to. Stop sharing. Why can't I stop sharing?
Okay, well, while we're while we're waiting, let me just speak to the issue of the fractional ownership. And timeshares. I think we really have an obligation, and I believe that in our last meeting, we had a consensus. That we wanted to say something to the council about the need to address Picasso type. Purchases and also timeshares, which create some of the same neighborhood problems that. Absentee ownership, short term rentals do. And and I do feel strongly about this. I I have a friend in Westlake Village, California, whose family. He inherited a Subaru dealership when his parents passed away. And he sold the dealership, the land, the buildings, franchise, everything. And he's now in the in the business of purchasing upscale homes near water. That he can rent out on a VRBO basis. He's he's like a one, one man Picasso operation. I think we're going to see more of this, and I think we ought to make make our our suggestions clear to the council about. Taking a defensive position on this. And and I think a defensive position is simply to say that these are business enterprises. And they they don't belong in a residential neighborhood. And, you know, let let. Let people challenge that if they want, but I think they'll probably spend their dollars and their time purchasing places and. Elsewhere, rather than trying to attack Gig Harbor's ordinance. So that's my thought in a nutshell.
All right, thanks, and I think Carl, can you bring up the single page so that we all can read? The wording that Commissioner Brown suggested. Vis a vis the Picasso type of. Enterprises. Fractional ownership. Here we go. Can you get any bigger?
Certainly. How's that?
Yeah, that's that's excellent. So I I'm presuming, Tom, that the yellow portions you're you're proposing to delete.
Correct.
And then the red is an addition.
Correct.
So why don't we, why don't we take first your proposed definition of a short term rental?
Yeah. There's nothing significant here, other than the fact that I thought there were some excess words. That that aren't necessary, and I'm more in favor of. Making it simple and and speaking in plain terms. And reducing the syllable count if wherever possible, so that's. That's why those words were taken out.
Yeah, I I would. Well, what did the rest of y'all think?
Carl, I was wondering what you and Jeremy put the or portion thereof, what was the thinking behind that?
My thinking behind that was that we we sort of are making a distinction between a whole house rental. And. And rooms for rent. And so I thought it was important to state that a short term rental could mean. In some cases, the whole house, and in other cases, it could mean just a couple of rooms and that, you know. If a if a if a person chose, they might only rent out a couple of rooms. As their as that that might be their entire business model, they may never rent out the whole house. So I thought it was important to have that distinction included.
That makes sense to me. I guess I but I would suggest that can stay. The other changes that Tom made. I'm seeing seeing fine now, change the intent of it, maybe a little clarity, a little shorter, but. I'm fine with the rest of those changes in that first paragraph.
I'm curious what the or provided, what the intent of that one was, how is that to be different from offered?
I think that is extraneous. I don't think it there. I don't think there is much difference there. I think that's a good, I think that's a good catch.
Okay. Yeah, I I agree, the portion thereof probably needs to stay. I agree with, I agree with you, Commissioner Saltis, so. Are the rest, you're comfortable with the changes as stated? With those two clarifications or three? Okay.
Chair, if I could address the fractional ownership since we're on this page?
Sure.
So while I agree that maybe that fractional ownership. And I know it's something that we've talked quite a bit about and timeshares is something that maybe the city does need to address in some manner. I don't think that, you know, looking at this further and in in discussing with staff. I I don't think that it's appropriate to address it as part of this ordinance. And because a fractional ownership or timeshare does not necessarily meet the definition of a short term rental. If we were creating a new. Chapter to the Gig Harbor Municipal Code that addressed all lodging, all lodging types. As some municipalities do have, they have a, you know, a lodging chapter or a housing chapter. That deals with all types of housing or lodging. Holistically, then I think something along these lines would make sense. But timeshares and fractional ownerships are not the same as a short term rental. It's they're they're not, they're they're not really in the same category, and so. I don't think that this is the proper ordinance to address those. And then furthermore, as far as this definition goes, you know, the the definition is sort of. Blurring the lines between defining what a fractional ownership is. And creating policy. Or regulation right within the within the definition, which wouldn't also, which also wouldn't be appropriate. So, you know. And that's sort of neither here nor there, because I I really feel pretty strongly that. That these timeshares and fractional ownership should not be addressed by the short term rental ordinance. It's just not the not the proper place for it.
I agree with Carl's assessment on that. It just does not seem an appropriate place. To deal with timeshares and fractional ownerships. Where where would the the appropriate place be?
It's a good question, Commissioner Brown, and I'm not sure, because we don't have a code. As I stated, we don't really have a code that deals with. These types of uses, you know, we would have to create something. And we, you know, we could, we could add them to. We could create the uses. Independently, we could add them to 1714 and put them into our use table. And just prohibit them across the board. That's one way. Of course, we would have to check in with. The legal department to make sure that that's that we legally can do that. Because as I understand them, you know, maybe not timeshares, but fractional ownerships, I mean, these are. Properties that are owned by multiple people. And then those people just determine how often they can use that home. I I don't know that there's any. Necessarily, if there if there would be some sort of legality against prohibiting someone from doing that, I mean, we have plenty of properties within. The harbor now that are owned by LLCs. We don't know how many owners. Are managing partners of that LLC. I mean, we could have these things happening right now, and I don't know how we would. How we would prohibit that from taking place legally.
Well, I I think my intent was this to say that to. Offer for sale. A fractional ownership property or a timeshare property is prohibited. And that's that's how you could control it. And and furthermore, I just want to point out that. An absentee owner. Short term rental property. Has many things in common and and many things that concern us. Like a fractional ownership property would. I mean, you you don't have a resident owner. You don't have a connection with the community. And we could go on and on. So. I agree, they're not the same thing, but they represent the same kind of. Threat or or potential liability to to our town and to the residents. And. I I just think. I'll shut up.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't. I thought you were done. Please continue.
Well, I think I think we appreciate Commissioner Brown's point, Commissioner Bennett or Commissioner Greiner.
Yeah, I feel like they probably have a place somewhere and I'm not sure. I don't feel like they belong in with short term rentals either. And timeshares and fractional ownership to me are also two fairly different types of owners, so they only need to be separated from each other. Fractional ownership is something that's an ownership issue, and I think like. I was saying, it's something that I don't know that we can affect that. I could go in with my neighbor and buy a house and we could just share the property 50 50 and each use it half of the year. And that's not something I think that can be the that is really within the purview of the city of of deciding who can or can't buy a home. That kind of seems outside of it. Timeshare is kind of a different situation, and that almost seems like it's more in a in a hotel type situation, so. Neither of those really feel like they belong in with the short term rental. And I'm not sure if there there's a concern at this point, or if this is something that's going on that is a problem. But it seems like they would be better off situated somewhere else in terms of regulations.
Okay, thanks. Commissioner Saltis, you have your hand up.
Yeah, I think Tom has got a good point here. My thought would be, it's really wasn't part of our our direct charter from the council. That perhaps with our submission on the search for rental recommendations. That we include sort of a future work suggestion or idea that. That we include sort of a future work suggestion or idea that says. Um, along the same lines as her criminals, that these other kinds of things. Could become problematic for the city and they probably need to be addressed, but that would be a council decision for them to task us to do. Another fun project.
Yeah, okay, thanks, Commissioner Greiner, do you have any thoughts?
Uh, Carl mentioned that this could perhaps be addressed by putting it in the matrix and making it prohibited. I I I don't. I don't know, but that seemed to me like. If there's no other home for it and it's something that needs to be included, that might be. An option, but I'm still listening and learning here.
Okay, thank you. Well, um, I I would tend to agree that this, that it's a great point, but this may not be the proper place for it. And so Carl, maybe you can. Maybe you can work on, um, finding a place or as Commissioner Saltis has suggested, letting, you know, giving a heads up to, um. The council that, you know, this is still kind of hanging out there.
Yeah, I was gonna suggest, uh, Chair, that maybe we, uh, include it as a finding, uh, in the recommendation. It's something that wasn't included in the in the ordinance, because we found that it wasn't consistent with with the charge. Uh, but that might be something council wants to consider tackling in the near term.
Yeah. Okay. All right, thanks.
Should, I'm sorry, Chair, should I move on, does everybody?
Yes, please.
Uh, okay, so getting into, uh, the intent here. I think, let's see. Oh, we'll just, so we'll just take seventeen dot XX dot O one O intent first. Uh, and so what we tried to pull together here is, uh, you know, what what we had heard, I I also, I'll admit, I I took a little bit of this language from, uh, the home occupation. Uh, permit chapter, uh, in the code, uh, because there are some, there's definitely some similarities, there's some overlap. Uh, with what we're trying to do and what home occupations do, so I thought that, um, some of that language fit in nicely. Commissioner Brown, uh, has taken some some of that out, particularly in, um, in B. And I and I think I think we're getting to the same point, and I think, again, I think Commissioner Brown is just trying to sort of. Make the language a little more precise.
Yeah, a little tighter.
Yeah, and and likely has some good points there.
Well, I like the changes that he has suggested. And, uh, I'd be willing to adopt them all. Anyone else?
I I concur, uh, with seventeen. Uh, point oh one oh that the the comments that have been made, make the language more precise and readable. Carl, is attainability a special word? I haven't heard that before.
Yeah, it's it's, I I sort of borrowed that from the work that shape, um, the South Sound Housing Affordability. Availability and it's and and attainability partnership is is what is doing, and so, you know, I thought that it was. Um, apropos, I thought that it made sense, uh, but I, if 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 the, it's it's not something that's absolutely necessary by any means.
I think there is a nuance there, though, you know, is is. Affordable long term housing available? Uh, is it affordable, and even if those two things are true? Is it attainable by, you know, by people, you're trying to live in the community or, you know, move within the community?
Yeah, there there definitely a distinction between the three terms.
Hopefully, housing experts thinks there's three different categories, I'm okay with it.
That's what I figure too, Commissioner Saltis.
Yeah, I'd keep it in. Attainability.
Okay, we seem to have concurrence on that. With his other recommended changes, thanks, Commissioner Brown. Okay, applicability?
Uh, yeah, applicability, this is an interesting one, Jeremy and I had some discussion about this, I'll I'll just take, um, O two O A first. Um, really interesting, and and when you read this passage a couple of times. Over and over, you start, it starts bringing up questions. Uh, so let me just read it out loud really quickly, the provisions of this chapter shall apply to all property owners. Seeking to operate a short term rental within. A legally established, single family dwelling unit or accessory apartment on a parcel owned by the same. Commissioner Brown's passage would read, the provisions of this chapter shall apply to all property owners seeking to operate a short term rental within their primary residence. Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't finish, oh, by the same, and that is established as their primary residence, I'm sorry, so that was my original. Commissioner Browns would read the provisions of this chapter shall apply to all property owners seeking to operate a short term rental within their primary residence. Which can be a legally established, single family dwelling. Or accessory apartment on a parcel owned by the same, so Jeremy and I were kind of mulling this one over, you know, I. Commissioner Brown sort of just taking the same language and sort of moving it around a little bit. But in reading this again, I started to have concerns, um, about. Uh, whether or not, you know, if if somebody wants to live in the accessory apartment as their primary residence. Would that then allow them to rent out the entire single family dwelling unit? Uh, at any point throughout the year. Um, because my original thinking and my intent, my 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 thinking of the intent of this section or this chapter is that. If somebody lives in their single family dwelling. That's their primary residence and they have an accessory apartment on site. They're able to rent out those two rooms throughout the year that we've allowed later in the ordinance. But my my own thinking was that they would also be allowed to rent out their accessory apartment. Throughout the year. Uh, as a short term rental, and I don't know if that was the planning commission's intent or not, you know, I I'm not sure if we ever sort of. Really broach that subject, and this applicability statement started making me think a little bit about it now. I think we're covered, if somebody does. Want to live in their accessory apartment as a primary residence. The definition of short term rental would preclude them from renting out their entire single family dwelling unit. For more than ninety days out of the calendar year, so I think that question in my mind is put to to put to rest. But it's still, the question lingers in my mind about whether or not the intent, the planning commission's intent. Was to allow accessory apartments to be rented out as a short term rental. For more than ninety days in the calendar year, does that, does that make sense?
Um, in my opinion on O two O, the. Words used in the staff draft more accurately reflect. Uh, what we have been talking about, uh, in particular, I think the addition of, uh. B four, uh. Doesn't make sense to me and and may not be appropriate in context of tiny homes, subsidized homes or tax exempt housing.
Okay, thanks. Other thoughts?
Carl, you kind of confused me, I'm afraid, about the ADU, um, discussion, I I got a little bit twisted around the axle there.
I apologize, because I kind of brought two ideas together there, I just, I kind of. That's how a discussion that Jeremy and I had earlier today went, when we were. Re-reviewing this stuff in preparation for the meeting, we got ourselves kind of turned around to. So maybe Commissioner Saltis, maybe we should just take first, if we could just take the language. Here and the change that Commissioner Brown is proposing, and whether or not we would like to. Keep what staff prepared, or if we want to take some of what Commissioner Brown. Some of what Commissioner Brown, um, suggests or recommends. Uh, or or nothing, and and just leave it at that for for the moment, maybe we can come back to my other quandary.
Okay, in that case, I would say that I was okay with the staff, um, words for A. And, um. That as well as for B, I I'm not sure that I understand the intent of number four, maybe Tom would clarify that a little bit, but. Not, I'm not hard over on that one.
Okay, thank you.
Number four was ten, uh, intended to specifically include. Uh, an operation like Rosedale Gardens or Rosedale Estates, whatever they're called. That's a all senior rental community. And when they got their building permits, they went to court with the city, they got an exemption from paying the. Uh, the school levy, basically, the fee that the developers have to pay for to support the, uh, school district. Because their, uh, CCNRs specifically exempted minors from residence there. They said, you know, we're we're not gonna, we're not housing any students, we shouldn't have to pay for the school, so they, that was granted. Uh, we discussed this at an earlier meeting, and I I thought that that was part of the intent of the tax exempt housing, uh. Number three there, but it wasn't very explicit, and I was just simply trying to make it explicit. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
About something along those lines, housing exempt from taxes or local impact fees, because that's what we're talking about is impact.
Yeah. That sounds better.
Agreed, that makes sense, Carl.
Yeah, and I I would agree that I like that the original staff version better, I I. The the can be in particular bugs me that that, uh, it's, it kind of introduces a. You know, it's the, it's the shall be or can be, you know, it see, it kind of introduces an ambiguity there that I don't think we want in there. Um, and and it, and. So I'm more comfortable with the staff's original version as well.
I agree with the staff's original version, and I like the change Carl just made to number three, I think that. Did what needed to be done there.
Okay.
Good.
I can agree with it all, I'll say, I agree with it all as well.
All right, thank you, so that's consensus, if not unanimity.
Uh, okay, so then nonconforming uses, um. Commissioner Brown didn't make any, uh, suggestions or recommendations on this one, um, however. Jeremy and I and staff, uh, have some, um, have some reservations on this one, and we're still. Kind of mulling this over, um, the the original intent here was to try and capture, of course, all of those. Formerly, uh, approved. Short term rentals that were, you know, that were approved through either a a conditional use permit process. Or might have been approved just outright through a business license. Um, and and actually, what we found is that some were actually approved through a business license, where they, and in the business license application, they denoted. Um, the fact that it was a home occupation and they were approved that way. What was brought to my attention in this, um, provision is that if something was approved as a conditional use permit. Our nonconforming use provisions. Allow for that conditional use to continue on in perpetuity. Um, as issued, um, until that use is abandoned for a period of, uh, one year, I believe it is. Um, and so for condition, so for short term rentals that were have already been approved as conditional uses, this. Ordinance will not affect those. What this ordinance will affect are all of those short term rentals that had only been approved under a business license or. Had no approval at all. And so this provision O three O. Either needs to be amended substantially. Or needs to be removed completely, um, and and I say that because, as I said, we can't affect the seat, the conditional uses. That were already approved, um, and I don't know if it makes any difference on those that were approved under a business license, because. They're gonna have to renew their business license anyway, and come back to the city. Uh, a year from now, maybe depending on when this ordinance is passed, maybe it's a half year from now. Um, and then we'll. Will require those businesses to come in under. A short term rental permit at that point, so this would have, I think this this provision would have little effect. Uh, on. Or really have little bearing on what we're trying to accomplish here, so that's, that's my, that's my spiel. For O three O, and I'll open that up to the floor, Chair.
Okay, thanks. Comments or questions?
I have the question, trying to understand the current ones that have a conditional use permit, does that mean that that permit basically supersedes anything here and the conditional use permit? Kind of works in perpetuity until they abandon that use, is that what you're, you were saying?
That's correct, yeah, and I can read the passage if it's if it's useful in seventeen sixty eight.
But I'm not sure, you you know, I I trust your interpretation of that, but my question would be that, um. As a follow on is, what if they sell the property, does the, does the CUP move with a property, or is it? Uh, terminated with property ownership change?
CUP runs with the land. So it does work differently than the short term rental permit would.
And is there essentially nothing that we can do within this realm to affect any of the CUPs? Or is there something that we could do, I can't even think of what that would be?
No, there's really not much we can do, I mean, they're they're, they would be considered a nonconforming use, because we have this. Regulation passed, if and when this regulation is passed. But the way, and I think it is important that I read this provision to you all, um, seventeen sixty eight O three nine, uses permitted under conditional use provisions, it says. A use that existed before the effective date of the adoption or an amendment of the applicable regulations. And that is permitted as a conditional use in the district in which it is located, under the terms of this title. Shall not be deemed a nonconforming use, so while this is in our nonconforming code, it sort of says, it's not really a nonconforming use, because it was. Given a conditional use. Granted a conditional use, I should say. Such, uh, let's see, so such a use shall be considered to exist as a conditional use. The scope of the conditional use shall be governed by the provisions of this chapter unless modified by the hearing examiner in accordance with chapter seventeen sixty four, which is our conditional use. Um, chapter. Initial use section, so, yeah, effectively. These provisions will not have. Uh, any weight. Or bearing on those uses that are already established under a conditional use permit.
About how many are there, Carl?
Uh, let's see, one moment. So that actually have a conditional use permit that.
There are three.
I think that's right, there's one. I think that's right, there's one. And we have a couple, of course, that are that are in and under review as well. Two. Three.
Four.
Looks like four.
Four that have been granted or two that have and two that are under review.
Yeah, we have four that have been granted and we have about.
Three under review currently.
Three on three under review currently. But now, keeping in mind that I think at least one of those that's under review is really more, it's not really a lodging, wasn't considered a lodging level one. Is that right?
One of them is a lodging level two. And there's another which. It's actually a permit to use on site, so it wouldn't need the conditionally used permit.
So in that case, that one would be affected. Because it wouldn't have a conditional use permit.
You mentioned business licenses been had been approved by some other ones, Carl.
Yes.
Is that on the same sheet you're looking at?
Yes.
Can't be very many then.
One. One, let's see, it was advised not to be approved. Two, this one, I don't really understand, we'd have to look this one up. Three. Or. Five. Six. Six, and then this is a management company that has multiple locations, this is Vacasa. We don't really know where all of their. Short term rentals are located necessarily, might might be some of these potentially, we're not sure. So about five, five or six. That we know of.
And you mentioned the business license ones could be, we can catch up with those downstream when they have to renew their business license?
Correct, Commissioner Saltus.
You know, that that hundred and thirty page, you know, consultant document. They had a section in there that said that there were towns that somehow they dealt with this issue. And and they. I think they actually use the term amortized, but it somehow, you know, were able over the course of time to. Have that. Permit expire or sundown or whatever the the term that you want to use. But having said that, there aren't. Very many of them currently in Gig Harbor. Those folks. Kind of worked in good faith with what the regulations were at the time, and and I know they've invested time and money. Just in the process, if not in the property itself. So. Thinking about. Taking away that uses is makes me uncomfortable. Even if we could do it. For those, it since it's such a small number anyway.
Yeah, I think it would require likely an amendment to. That nonconforming use chapter, and potentially an amendment to our. To our CUP chapter, I mean, the staff staff could could do some research on that and try and and and. Work through what that would look like, and obviously, we'd have to work with our. Legal team to see what. What. Guidance they would they could give. But yeah, again, I again, I'm not sure, I don't know. Playing commission feels that it the the work. The results would be worth the work or not.
I don't think the bang is worth. The the effort on that one, and I agree with Commissioner Huxmo that. They've acted in good faith and, you know, that they shouldn't be penalized because with the rules of the growth of engagement have changed. It's such a small number, and they did do the good faith, I'd say about that, maybe we can let this lie, but the one area I have concern about is. Of the other ones that are operating in the city. And I guess you could say they're operating without being approved or regulated on. That's going to be where I think our. The issue is going to be. And I hope we have a place we can address them under enforcement. Carl, you recommending removing that section entirely?
I I am, I am recommending. That staff. Take a little more time with it and and either remove it or bring it back substantially revised. And this would be based on guidance from the city attorney if 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 it were if it were to come back revised.
Carl, do you think there's anything currently that would apply to nonconforming uses? Or is it basically that we've got either the CUPs that we can't affect and we have the. Business licenses which are going to get renewed anyway, so if there's nothing else that applies to this. What would the what would staff be adjusting it to?
I think if if we were to adjust it, it would allow for some period of time for those that. Don't have a conditional use permit that weren't established through a conditional use permit, it would allow for some period of time for them to exist. Prior to. Prior to them needing a short term rental permit and and the reason for that might be that if we, let's just say, if we were not to. Approve this. Ordinance until later in the year. And or let's, even if it were in August or something, and and one of those established. Short term rentals that were established through a business license and, you know, their. Their business license was expired in September, so they had to renew. They wouldn't really have much of a time period to get ready. To submit for a short term rental, you know, be kind of a. Be kind of a hit on them right right away. And so maybe having, you know, oftentimes when we write regulations like this where we know it's going to affect. Several property owners or uses in the city, we have sort of a, you know, sunset period or something like that, it says, you know, anything. Established prior to this date or. And and for a period of, you know, certain period of time. Could be considered. Legally nonconforming until. Such a such time, some something like what we have here, but it just needs to be. Made more succinct so that we make it, we make some distinction between. How all of these uses were approved in the city, since we've got kind of. Two different tracks that. These uses have been on in order to establish themselves. Now, again, I don't know if it matters, you know, we we. We could, we we could eliminate this, and you know, I don't know who, I don't know who and how many it would affect. Not sure. In other words, I guess, with that short term rental, if their. Business license was going to set to expire in September and they came in to renew. If we had something in this code that said, we'll allow that short term rental to exist for one more year. And upon that following year, they must. Submit for. A short term rental permit. Something along those lines. But again, as far as we know, we don't have that many out there either, right, you know, looking at. The spreadsheet that Michelle pulled together, so based on staff's research and what we know in our permitting system, there just aren't a lot out there, so you know. I don't know that it's going to affect that many folks either.
Well, I go ahead, Commissioner Saltus. I I was just gonna say, I'd like to give the staff a little more time to fine tune that and bring it back at the next meeting or. When they send out the next draft, so. I I think it makes sense to try to be clear if we can. And if the clarity is not necessary, then we can drop it entirely, but it wouldn't hurt to. More clarity is always is always a better thing from my perspective, if we can get there, if we can't, if it's not needed, then let's drop it. I give Carl and Jeremy another shot another shot of this. Okay, so. We're going to move on with that idea.
That's what I would recommend, Chair, what exactly what Commissioner Saltus. Said.
Any other comments before we move along?
I concur with Commissioner Saltus and Carl.
All right, thanks. Okay.
All right, so seventeen XX oh four oh, application procedures. There are a few things that were changed in here, so this this section is meant to sort of define. What we would need in addition to what we already require for a complete application in nineteen oh two. What would be additionally required for this specific permit? To have a complete application, this is also the section that defines. Sort of sets forth a depth, sets forth what type of permit. A short term permit from short term rental. Permit application would be, which is the type two that we all that we discussed at previous meetings. And there were just a few changes in here that. Commissioner Brown. Recommended, and I think. You know, staff having reviewed this, we were okay with. Most of them, but I I would say that I. Actually, I'm okay with the removal of the complete application, I'm not comfortable with including VRBO and Airbnb. Be interested to hear what planning commission thinks about that, but. Listing something so specific. In the ordinance, to me, even though we're saying it's an example. We, people take these words very seriously and and they will. Key in on the fact that we've listed these two examples, and there obviously are going to be more. Types of, you know, more platforms out there that people might want to use. And I don't think we want to have any inkling that we're limiting ourselves to just these two, these platforms might be gone in a year. If, you know, Elon Musk might buy them and dissolve them in six months. Removing B one D. I don't think is any problem and. Adding this language to two A, in my opinion, is not necessary because we already. Do include garages as off street parking stalls. In our code, so it's a it's not, it's not necessary.
Where where is that? The garages are included as off street parking.
I believe it's in. So what we say, and so it's going to be two parts to this, so what we say in seventeen seventy two oh two oh, which is our off street parking and loading requirements. We say that the off street parking required for the use is specified here in shall be for use only by the automobiles of. The residents, employees and customers of the activity served by the off street parking. If we read the definition of a garage. It says. A building or portion thereof in which motor vehicles, automobiles are stored, repaired or maintained, so the connection is made that. Garages. By their very nature are intended for parking.
Well, the reason I added that is I I'm just more comfortable if we're. Clear and. Direct in in describing what an off street. What qualifies as off street parking, because not everyone who may be considering. Renting a bedroom. Is familiar with. Everything in all of the the code, and that's why I would include it there.
I would chime in that I concur with Carl's assessment. Okay, thanks, Commissioner Bradbury.
I also agree that using the specific names of the companies is kind of. Maybe a little too timely and seems like just using the generic term platform should cover. Whatever the platform of the time is. I also agree that defining the garage space as tree to me seems fairly redundant. Just because off street to me is a garage or driveway or a parking lot that seems a little obvious to me. It doesn't seem like it needs defining, I do wonder about the term parking stalls. And wonder why we wouldn't use the term parking spaces, but that's just me.
All right, thanks.
Now, in earlier meetings, we discussed the concept of. Approved platforms and and I thought the. Idea was that the city would approve platforms and only approve those platforms that would reliably rebate the. Occupancy tax to the. To the county so the city could get their share of it. Is that somewhere included in this ordinance, Carl, that the city will? Have an approved list of platforms?
No, it isn't, Commissioner Brown, and it left out really sort of intentionally to allow the city to have that kind of flexibility. To. To change if we need to, and as new platforms become. Available as old platforms go away. And as we find moving forward with this ordinance that maybe some platforms are reliable and other platforms aren't reliable as far as collecting taxes and things. I think it allows the the director some deference to. To make that call. For the department.
But is is the concept of city approved platforms in this ordinance anywhere?
No.
Well, I think that probably should be. I mean, that's a. A restriction and control. Over the process. For example, my my friend in Westlake Village, California. Intends to use their own booking service. Not VRBO, not Airbnb, but their own. And you probably wouldn't. You wouldn't want that. For for the city, for someone in Gig Harbor.
I so I added some language here, Commissioner Brown, and I don't know if anybody else can see. To be one, just to say, what if what if we said something like listing platforms? To be one, just to say, what if, what if we said something like listing platforms as approved by the director? To be utilized for advertising. Just put it right in that same provision, but. Sort of allowing that flexibility for the, for the department to determine. What platforms will be accepted.
I think that solves that problem.
Can we have an approved list, like the approved species list for planting? So it can be changed without. Having to go rewrite the ordinance?
Yeah, that's a good thought, Michelle, and I had thought about that, too, when, when I looked at this and. And when we were drafting it, and also when Commissioner Brown made his recommendations here, but. You know, and I, I don't know that we need to state that. I don't know that we need anything quite that formalized. I could talk, you know, and that might be a good discussion to have with. With the director. See how she feels about, about that. But I'm certainly open to direction from Planning Commission if you feel that that's important, that we do have something. Noted in this ordinance that is that specific.
Well, I like, I think Tom brings up a good point that we had discussed in prior meeting that, that. It's mandatory, and it, you know, listing platforms is approved by the director. Which are mandated to be utilized for advertising. You know, so. That, you know, that compelling requirement, I think, does need to be spelled out. So there's. So there's no question that you can't do this on your own.
I agree with that, Greg. And I'd also say that rather than just for advertising, don't we need to state that they need to use it for reporting of revenues for the occupancy tax? Is there another place that's talked about, Carl, in the, in the ordinance? But that seems to be a pretty important piece of information that we need to. Call out.
I don't know that we do have that in here. We have this listings for short-term rental units shall include. The short-term rental permit. And I see.
Right, right above it, NG, short-term rentals must be listed through a city-approved third-party platform.
That's it. Thought we had it in here someplace.
Does that mean that then they have to do, report the occupancy money or, you know, provide the occupancy receipts to the city?
We wouldn't approve them if they didn't, right?
Yeah, well, that would be part of the renewal process under the business license. To ensure that, you know, we are, they are reporting properly and that we are receiving.
Okay. Maybe you could add to that G. To ensure lodging taxes are, are collected. Collected by the city.
And here again, we did say city-approved. So I think, you know, that's your point. The points are well taken here. So going back up to what we need for the complete application. Required listing platforms as approved by the director.
Yeah, and I don't know if listing, you know, as far as the language, but listing, booking, you know, what? I don't know the language they use in the, in the biz, but it's, advertising isn't the word because it's not just. It's not the advertising. It's when it's the actual booking of the room. And the collection of the revenue has to be handled through a third-party platform.
So this is the statement that maybe the commission's uncomfortable with having this on the end.
It's more than just the advertising. Yeah, I think it's probably. Take it out.
And then I think there's consensus, Carl, to also take out the, you know, the VRBO and Airbnb bit. Okay. Let's keep going.
And are we, we're okay with, with this removing expected number of days to be rented in the calendar year? That was a recommendation by Commissioner Brown, and I think this is something that I, that we, that we included based on. Some of the discussions that we had, something that we heard from Planning Commission.
I don't know what that buys you to have that kind of speculative guess, guess information in the application. I don't know what you do with that data.
Yeah.
It is speculative, but we do specify in our definition 90 days. So this, in my view, is where we would pick up that they understand and will comply with the 90 days.
I think that's a good point, Commissioner Bradbury, and I think that's kind of where we were going with this. It's also. Something that we would want to look at, you know. When we take in the application, we're approving the short-term rental application. And they get their business license. They're going to come back annually to renew their business license. And at that time, they're going to be reporting how many days. They used their short-term rental. This is something we can go back to and say, well, in your application, this is what you told us you were going to be doing. And what you've provided us now for the renewal is not, you know, not, not actually consistent. I wouldn't say that has to be exact. But it gives us a little more. I suppose leverage to have that, have that discussion and make sure that they're sort of toeing, toeing the line, what they said they were going to do within the confines of their approved permit.
But the permit doesn't limit the number of days they can rent the place.
It limits the number of days they can rent the whole unit.
Yes.
And does not limit the number of days they can rent out a couple of rooms. But it requires them to acknowledge that in their, in their permit application.
Yeah, I, I think. I'm comfortable with it being left in. I'm, does Commissioner Griner, Commissioner Bennett, anybody else have any feelings one way or the other?
I, I like it being left in. I like what the, you know, what their intent is, even if, you know, it's vague. I think it's important and. And I like Carl's comment that then when they apply, it's something to compare what they actually did with. So I, I like it in there. I think it's, it should stay.
I also agree with the, the intent of it to use that as kind of the, the test to make sure that they understand what the requirements are.
Okay. On, on, on E, I think that they're going to have to provide a range because it can. Be dramatically different depending on what time of the year, day of the week, weekend. The rental fee per night I'm alluding to. Okay, and I think we have consensus that we don't need to define a garage space. Although I do agree with the comment about parking spaces as opposed to parking stalls.
Yeah.
I also agree, Chair. I think that's a really good point, and I was just looking through 1772, our parking regulations, and we do use spaces. As our term in there. So I think that makes good sense if, if the commission would like that change, I'll make that change.
Yes, make that change. Good call, Amanda.
Okay.
Will do. Okay. Yeah, I like that. I, and I need to correct myself because I usually say stalls when I'm speaking about parking in Gig Harbor, but I should stop that. Okay, so 050, criteria for short-term rental permits. So now we've moved, we had sort of our complete application. Now, these are the regulations, the actual regulations that they must comply with. They have to meet these criteria for us to approve that permit application. Here, and also when they come in to renew their business license, these are the regulations that we would be looking at to ensure that they're in compliance with. And so we've got A through. Q here with Commissioner Brown's addition of Q. And so. Don't think. Here we talk about the 150 feet that we discussed. I think everybody was. I think we all sort of coalesced around that as our perimeter. Proximity rule. Commissioner Brown made some changes to C to include two bedrooms. Unless rental period is within the, you removed allowed 90 calendar days. Added during which. The entire dwelling unit may be rented. So just some, some fine tuning of the language. And that's consistent, using entire instead of whole is consistent with the definition. So I think that is a good, another good catch, Commissioner Brown. I don't know if anybody has any issues with that language changing or, or any of the other language. I'm just focused in on.
Can we go back to the number B for a second? It says the 150. I don't know if this is the case, but what if we have two places closer than 150 right now? Will they be, you know, non-compliance somehow, whatever that term is, it's not grandfather anymore?
I don't know. Yeah, it'd be a non-conforming, non-conforming is what you're going for, Commissioner Saltus.
Yeah.
If it were legally established there. Yes. Again, I think back to. You know, if they have a CUP, then they're legally established. They get that use. Until which time they. Relinquish it. Through the business license process. Yeah, I could create some problems, I guess. I don't know how to answer it exactly. It definitely could create some problems.
Can we find out if we have two business licenses currently permitted within 150 feet of each other? Because that will only be a problem. If it exists now and those people expect to continue it when they renew their license. Otherwise, it would just be if there's one existing and someone else wants to come within that 150, they just wouldn't be permitted.
It's probably worth the check, Carl, of the, like Amanda says, to see if there is a problem. Maybe I'm just making something up here, but.
Yeah. We can, we can definitely run that check, Commissioner Bennett.
Well, I think ultimately it would be the same, would apply. I mean, if there are two that went through the process already and they're. Within the 150 feet that we would allow them to continue to operate. I still would be curious to know if there is any way to have that CUP. Through some reasonable process to have that CUP. Stop when there's a sale of the property.
I'll make a note of that, Chair.
Thanks.
Chair, it's past seven. Do we have to have a vote at this point to continue?
At eight.
At eight? Okay, thank you.
Nice try, Larry.
No, all efforts work, right?
Okay. So I've got a couple, we got a couple of research projects on that one, so I'll do a little, we'll do a little work on that and. We'll propose changes as necessary, but at a minimum, we'll address. We'll address them in our, in our report for the, for the hearing.
Okay.
Okay, so moving down to C, we have some changes here from Commissioner Brown suggested. Staff has no issue with these changes?
I don't see any issue with them either.
Concur. It's more clear.
You're fine with me.
Okay, sounds like consensus. Thanks, Tom.
Anything on, anyone have any concerns about D through L?
For G, are we going with city-approved third-party platform? I remember up above you had written director-approved. Did we change that one to city also?
I, I think we should say director. So I think that should be changed there. Is that okay? Right. Okay, so M. Here, Commissioner Brown suggests. And this was just a, the owners was just a typo, but that was omitted. So it's a good catch. I tried to stay away from adding in any other folks, like managers or operators in this ordinance and just kind of keep it. To property owners because the property owner is really who we're issuing the permit to. And it's the property owner's response. The property owner must. Live on site. And while they may have a manager or some other party that they've named who would manage while they're. Away, it's still their responsibility. And so. I, I just don't want to give the sense to anyone that they could just have a management company managing their short-term rental for them. Even when they're living within the, within the home. I mean, I think the idea and the intent behind this ordinance is to put the onus on the property owner to manage their business.
Up, back on you, Carl, a little bit on that one. If you're renting out your entire house for some period of time. You may not even be there. You may be down in Florida or Arizona. And you probably won't be available within an hour to, you'd have to have an agent or manager, I would think, in those cases. So the property owner or their agent. Seems to make some sense to me. The onus is still on the property owner or their, or their dedicated, or their approved agent or something like that.
Yeah, I was just thinking, I think I actually, this was brought up by a staff member who reviewed this, and I think I actually had some language. Let me go. Find that really quick. I might have been suggesting on this. Oh yeah, we were thinking maybe the property owner or their designee, much like what you were just saying, Commissioner Saltus. No way, it's not just, it's not a manager, but it's somebody that they must. You know, designate. You know, designate available within. That one hour. However, I think Commissioner Brown's language probably gets to the same end.
But I like that you said there designated because, you know, it is somehow is. Assumes that the owner is still responsible somehow. I don't that language feels more that way to me.
Something like that.
And and that it brings up a a secondary issue though is where is that? Where will the city? Keep track of who the owner's designee is, or is it gonna be? Should we required to be posted inside the building, you you know, next to the good neighbor policy? For. Because if we're calling the property owner and the property owners, you know, outsailing the seven seas and not available. We, how do we know who the designee is?
Would that be maybe something that goes on the permit also?
We're just bringing up the short term rental, the good neighbor policy that we drafted, and I think. We have in here twenty four hour contact information. If at any time during your stay with concerns regarding your neighbors or issues that may arise in dwelling unit, please contact. Please call the contact provided by the, oh, and here I said operator, and I just said that I never weren't wasn't using that. I changed that term. So it should say, please call the contact provided by the property owner and posted in the unit. In the event of emergency, please call nine one one. So I think we were trying to kind of cover it there again, putting the onus back on the property owner. Um, I don't know that the city needs to be involved if there was some sort of an issue. It's really, it really comes down. It's the it's the property owner who's on the hook.
I think we included that in the good neighbor policy because it's uh something that could change on a frequent basis. Uh, the contact person and it's not going to be one singular person forever or for the life of the permit.
And that's a good point, too, Jeremy. You know, that's kind of one of the reasons why we took the good neighbor policy out of the ordinance, just like Jeremy said, so we could. Modify that or make it, you know, it could be specific. To that property or to that property owner in some way if they, you know, if they wanted to name. A particular designee within their good neighbor policy, they certainly could do that, or we maybe require it for some reason. Does that get to? Your question, Commissioner Bennett?
Yeah, I think so. I think that covers it.
Okay, everybody then, let's see. I think just adding the term liability and in.
Yep, which I think makes sense.
Yeah.
Um, and then in O, we talk about the good neighbor policy and we say in a form provided by the city. Could say director, I don't know, shall be signed by the property owner and posted on site and invisible location. And again, it shall be the responsibility of the property owner to ensure the policy is enforced. P. Commissioner Brown recommends taking out um a. Noting that the guest log is a copy. So Commissioner Brown was your was your intent there that this would not that we would want the actual guest logs submitted.
Well, I don't know what you'll you'll do with a collection of guest logs. I mean. It it seems to me that if if the city has access to the guest logs. Including historical logs, that's all you really need. And you don't really need a uh to to maintain a library of these things. For 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 prior years at City Hall. It just seemed like an overreach to me for no for no good purpose.
Well, it would be a historical record. Um, and you know, if we were to end up having a problem with a particular short term rental. Uh, you know, they 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 started out in good faith. Uh, we weren't having any issues. And then down the road, we started having issues. And maybe we had issues that we didn't realize we were having. We would have that copy to go back and look at. We'd have a record. Of how many folks they had staying there throughout those years. Potentially, if there was any parking violations or something along those lines, we could go back and we'd be able to look and see if the license plates matched up potentially. I don't know. I it you might be right. It might be just an overreach and extraneous to require them. But I don't know how we would, you know, part of the idea here is that we have a review of their. Renewal of their license renewal. And we would want to review that log to make sure that what they're stating. How many folks they said they had staying and at particular times, are they meeting that ninety days? This is going to be the record that we're going to look at and review in order to renew that license.
That's a lot of work.
Well, it has, it would have to be, it'll have to be done. I mean, I don't know how else we regulate these if we're not doing that.
Well, I'm envisioning this also to be something as simple as an Excel spreadsheet of some sort. So it's not going to be, they're not going to be handing over necessarily some handwritten booklet to you. It'll be. A photocopy or an extra printed copy of a spreadsheet that just goes in each year with their renewal. That just gets reviewed with it. It doesn't seem too onerous or like too much for the city to have, or even if it's just providing the Excel file via email.
Yeah, that's what I would expect to Commissioner Bennett and, you know, and they could just scan the pages. I mean, that would be, you know, as good as anything. Uh, or they could transcribe them into an Excel spreadsheet, I suppose, as well. And if we felt that there was any. You know, reason that we needed to see the actual logbook, we could request that as part of the review.
So you could probably clean it up a little bit, but because in the beginning of P, you call it the guest logs shall be maintained. And then the last sentence there could just say the log shall contain the following instead of log book. That makes.
Carl, I would have a question as to why license numbers would be required in this log.
I think we were thinking because of um potential potentially if there are parking issues. Um, we would have those, we could have those license plates. So if there if there were um complaints from neighbors about parking. And the police came and there was any record of uh of those parking violations. Then we could show that. That uh short term rental was not uh was not operating within the. Policies or within the regulations of this ordinance. So, you know, some way to sort of check. And Jeremy, uh, you might be able to speak to it, but I think that we've saw this in a couple of other codes.
Uh, yeah, the license plate numbers.
Yeah.
I don't remember off the top of my head which code that was, but I can definitely look that up and.
I think we thought is.
Next time.
I think we were thinking of, you know, we've 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 sort of took this from another. Code. So there was some precedent, so we felt like it made sense. Maybe it doesn't. Maybe again, it's an overreach and we certainly don't want to do that, but. But I think for, you know, from 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 a parking standpoint. It could be important. It could also be important if there were multiple cars there. Why were there so many cars? You're only renting out two rooms. I don't know. That would maybe be something that could come that would come up under review because remember when we're when we're renewing that business license, we're looking to see if. If the operation is working, operating within these rules and regulations. And and as well, if we have, if we end up with a lot of complaints. Uh, from from the neighborhood about a particular location. We want to have as much data as we can.
It's also commonplace in a lot of condos and HOAs that if you have visitors. You you keep a copy of the license plates of the visitors. So I think it's it's appropriate here. License plate numbers, it's what I meant to say.
I wonder, Carl, if you could keep the onus on the um property owner and. You know, that they're required to keep that logbook with the license plate numbers. And they're required to keep those for a period of three years. So. Because then you don't have, there's a point that was made, you don't have to worry about creating a new paper file. You know, it's City Hall. Um, because there's plenty of people, myself included, that don't know how to make an Excel spreadsheet. When I need one, I ask my wife. So. Then that could, you know, keep the onus on the record keeping on the property owner and that. So and if an issue came up with the city, you can say, hey, you need to bring in your logbook from the past two years of the past year or whatever. Because we need to match some things up here, or when you when at the time you come in to renew your permit, you need to bring your logbooks with you. Um, so they can be flipped through. Um, I I don't know, I'm just trying to see both sides of this without putting. You know, such an onus on the on the city and the space and such.
Well, we wouldn't, we wouldn't create any kind of paper trail necessarily. It would be all electronic. Um, so we would require. Scans or or we would scan. The documents.
Okay.
Uh, to make an electronic file, so that I don't think that would be an issue, but and. And we also, you know, they wouldn't, we couldn't just have them bring the logbook in. For review. We, well, we could. To your point about them keeping it for three years, that maybe that makes sense. And then we only request it when and if we need it.
Right.
I I I do see that point. So so your point, so so in that, so in that scenario, when they're renewing their business license. You don't think that that's something that we should be requiring them to provide unless we need it?
Yeah, that would be my thought and and you know, I I would kind of hope. You know that there's going to be liaison with the with the. Code enforcement officer in the police department that, you know, I have there been. Issues, complaints, violations and all that at the time of business license or the permit renewal.
Yeah.
So the. So this uh logbook, it's mentioned in City of Spokane's short term rental code under they have a monitoring section. Um, the basis theory reads, all short term rentals must maintain a logbook, must include the names and home addresses of guests, guest license plate numbers of traveling by car. Dates of stay and the room assigned each guest. Log must be made available for inspection by city staff upon request. So a lot of uh what we had is very similar to that. And I believe there's uh also found it in City of Portland's code.
Yeah, so it just added the point that I meant is that it's available, you know, for inspection upon request.
Yeah.
Yeah, we we could certainly revise this um P to.
Okay. Any other conversation about that point? So we can keep things moving.
We'll revise that section so it reads better, but we're okay uh with what is required in the law, these numbers one through three.
Yes, yes.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, okay, and then uh this final uh queue is one that Commissioner Brown added. And we, I did not, we did not include this in the ordinance. It is included in the. Good neighbor policy.
Look, the reason, the reason I think it should be included in the ordinance is simply, a lot of people are going to be reading this ordinance. Uh, beginning next week, I guess, uh, and and say, well, wh- what is it prohibit? What is it permit? And they won't necessarily be reading the good neighbor policy. And and I think that's a key. The key feature of this proposed ordinance and it ought it ought to be explicitly stated. Not not in a a subordinate document. I mean, it belongs in the good neighbor policy, but it it also, I think, should be stated explicitly in the uh in the ordinance.
If we were going to include this, uh, I I would, I would like, I would like, I would recommend that we remove. Et cetera. We would say something like and similar. Activities and and activities of a similar nature.
Yeah, I like that better.
Yeah, I do, too. Not the weddings and sweating showers and the bachelor parties.
Right. Um. Okay, are we are good with that language then? I think that works pretty well.
Yeah, I'm good.
Sounds good.
Good. Moving on, duration of approval. Commissioner Brown had one uh. Addition here, he added B. The initial permit and business license shall have a one year duration. And renewals shall have a two year duration.
Yeah, we discussed that, didn't we? And just as an attempt to reduce the burden on the. City Hall and also to uh make doing business in Gig Harbor a little easier for people who are in. Operating in a a a compliant operation.
We do state recommends the business license renewal. We don't have any jurisdiction over how long a business license lasts.
Yeah, and that's that was kind of where we went with this, Commissioner Brown. So I think, you know, your point's well taken. I think originally we were thinking that there would be a renewal of the. Actual short term rental permit. But where we ended up going was to say the short term rental permit is issued, it's issued to the property owner. And the renewal process would be handled through the business license. And if that's the case, that's an annual process. And so we're kind of stuck with one year renewal.
I withdraw my recommendation then.
Uh, the rest of this provision is okay, though, with everybody? Oh, six oh.
Did I just had a question if we need to some say in here that it's not transferable? I I don't know. Is that implied? Is? Is that a problem? I I don't know. I just had written that in my notes.
I'm just looking back through some of the other provisions here, applicability. So our applicability statement, we say. The provisions of this chapter shall apply to all property owners seeking to operate a short term rental with an illegally established single family dwelling unit or accessory apartment on a parcel owned by the same. Uh, that is established as their primary residence. I think that's going to change with Commissioner Brown's provisions a little bit, but. I think the implication there is that the permit is issued to the property owner. This is applicable to the property owner, not the property.
Okay. That's fine. I just wanted to make sure it was in there somewhere. Thanks.
So, but I I I see your point, Commissioner Grine. I just want to make sure that we, yeah, that we are on good grounds. I think it's a, it's a really good point.
Carl, I'm always slow on here, going back to the annual renewal thing that you took out there that Tom had recommended.
Let me go back.
Are you saying basically that the the short-term permit runs concurrently with the business license and it will be renewed at the same time as the business license? Every year?
No, what, what we're saying is that that short-term rental permit would just exist in sort of in perpetuity. Brings up a really good point.
I'm not sure. I like that idea. All right.
I mean, the, the short-term rental license permit exists as long as or until property ownership changes. Or the property no longer possesses, or the property owner no longer possesses a valid City of Gig Harbor business license.
So if they behave badly and they come up for business license renewal, then that's where the, the penalty or the revocation can occur.
Yes. And we say that here below, that an approved short-term rental permit may be revoked for one or more of the following reasons. The approval was obtained by fraud or erroneous information was presented by the applicant. Uh, or the short-term rental is being operated contrary to the provisions of this title or any other applicable ordinance statute law or regulation. So
that process goes is done during the business license. We know.
Could be or not.
Oh, I got you. Anytime.
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
That does make me think about one other thing here, and that is expiration, duration of permit approvals. We need to, Jeremy, we make a note that we, we just, we need to look at the duration of permit approvals in 1902 008.
Yeah.
It might be something that I overlooked.
Okay. So thoughts on the on B? And by the way, if you haven't heard, the city council just approved hiring a full-time enforcement officer.
Very timely.
Yes, it is. We're very excited about it. So what we tried to do here, commissioners, is we have already in our code, certain enforcement provisions. And as I think I stated at a previous meeting, the council is interested in reviewing those provisions. Um, and maybe making some changes. And so we wanted to recognize that those provisions already exist in our code and that we would still conduct our enforcement consistent with those, but because of the concerns that planning commission has raised and some of the, some of the concerns that we've heard from the community. Um, we also wanted to acknowledge that maybe there should be something a little bit steeper within this ordinance that, that applies just to short-term rentals specifically. As maybe kind of a bigger stick. So both would apply, in other words, our current enforcement provisions as well as these additional. And I think it was Commissioner Krosick was liked the idea of sort of a graduated fee or penalty schedule.
Thoughts, everybody?
I'm fine with it, the way it's written.
Think there should be some kind of three strikes and you're out provision. I mean, there, there may be some level number of offenses that all of a sudden you say, okay, that's it, you know? Uh, it's, it's, it's time that that's too many and we have to revoke your license. Otherwise, I mean, five hundred, thousand, thousand, I don't know. When, when does that end? Is there a a two, two, a limit there, Carl, that you would see?
We, we certainly could put a limit in. What I worry, I guess what I worry about there is, and you know, of course, if we're, if there are substantiated concerns, something that I read, and I don't remember where I read it, is in some of the literature that we were reviewing, but there was some discussion about this idea of sort of a, of serial complaints in order to sort of abolish that use from the neighborhood, you know? Uh, and that can happen, right? I mean, it can happen with a home occupation. It can happen with a lot of different uses, I suppose. But I think if we wanted to add language to that effect, Commissioner Saltis, we'd want to be very clear that they would need to be, you know, it couldn't, it couldn't be based just on complaints alone. It would have to be based on actual substantiated violations in some manner.
I would presume every time you find somebody a thousand dollars, you had some substantiation behind it.
Yeah, I think you're right. Uh, that makes sense.
Yeah. How about, how do you feel about that concept? That Commissioner Saltis brought up.
I'm sorry, Chair, who did you ask?
Uh, just anyone else.
Oh, sorry.
Commissioner Bradbury, Commissioner Grine, Bennett.
I'm happy with a cap. Whether it's free or violations, I don't know, but yeah.
And, and I guess another question then along those lines is, you know, would those violation, would there be some time period? Or is it just for the life of the permit?
What if we did something like, you know, the first offense as written with a, you know, 500 and then a thousand for each repeat offense, but then under C, as far as revocation, you could add a third bullet that says three fines within any 12-month period of time is reason for permanent revocation.
We violate, you might want to use violations rather than fines. Right.
Within, within one year?
I, I would say within any 12-month period of time, because then you yeah. Because the, the permit is not, you may is going to be off of the calendar year and you know.
I think that does it.
And again, I'm, I'm still, uh, just so the commission is aware, I'm still, you know, we're still waiting for some review comments back from from the city attorney on some of the stuff. So there may be, there may be minor changes or minor recommendations for changes at our next meeting, based on that, based on that review.
How about more than three violations within a 12-month period are subject to the discretion of the director. I mean, get the some kind of wiggle room in there in case the community development director wants to weigh in for some other reason.
Uh, can you, I'm not sure I follow Commissioner Saltis.
Well, it, it, maybe there's three violations, three, three violations in 12-month period, but maybe there's some mitigating factors or the property ownership has changed. I don't know, just trying to soften a little bit, but I like the idea within 12 months and some, some specific number of violations is enough to revoke the license.
Well, if we leave.
Yeah, 16 says maybe revoke, which gives the city the discretion, I would think, to not revoke it if it was a tiddlywinks violation.
Right. Got it.
I would consider adding a fourth bullet regarding the failure to pay any appropriate room taxes or other fees.
Wouldn't, wouldn't that be a violation?
Uh, I, yeah, I, I think it would be now that you mentioned that, that would have to be considered a violation.
Yeah, I think it would fall under two. Is the way I would look at that.
Is title the right word there, Carl?
Well, I said title. So when we say title, that refers to all of chat, all of title 17. So all of our zoning code.
Okay. All right.
So it sort of encapsulates the whole thing. So if there are any other provisions that apply, then you know, we can, we can they're sort of referenced incorporated by reference.
Okay. So is everybody comfortable with that?
I am. Good. I'm comfortable with it.
All right. That takes us on down to 1714 oh two oh, uh, short-term rental as a use. Um, and we added in sub bullet 32, we're down to, we're up to 32 sub bullets in our matrix now. And this one says short-term rentals are subject to chapter 17 dot XX, you have our municipal code, which of course will reference back to the provisions that we just were discussing. And what we, what we did here is so we're saying permitted. And of course, in this context permitted means that they need a short-term rental permit uh, because of this seven, because of this sub 32. Um, and they're permitted in all zones where single-family residential dwelling units are permitted. That I'm, that's just what this says. That's what, that's what's being stated here.
Okay. I'm going to take silence as consent.
Yes. Yep.
Okay.
Great. Make sure that I capture everything up here. Oh, I need to add that over here really quick. One final thing here, Chair, that I just want to capture this note. Okay. All right. Chair, that concludes my presentation for this evening.
Great. Well, nice work by you and your team to get that put together. I appreciate, you know, all the comments and the time that Commissioner Brown put into tickling our brains and looking at things slightly differently and appreciate everyone's input over the past goodness. How long has it been now? How many hours?
A couple of years, isn't it?
Yeah, I think so. We've been working hard on this. Yeah. Both for the folks interested in, in doing this type of thing and also for trying to address the concerns of folks that, that aren't necessarily in support of short-term rentals in our, our lovely little burg. So nicely done. Lots of great discussion.
Sure. Sure. I, I'm sorry. There was one more thing and, and that was kind of back to the point that I was trying to make about accessory apartments. And whether or not, so the way we've got this set up right now, the intent of the commission was that we would have, you have your whole, your entire home, your entire single-family dwelling unit, you're allowed to rent out two rooms within that single-family dwelling unit. All year annually. If you want to rent out your entire single-family dwelling unit, you get to do that for 90 days out of that 12-month period. How, what was the commission's intent relative to accessory apartments? My thinking about them was that the intent was accessory apartments would also be able to be rented out at any point as a short-term rental during that 12-month period. But I don't know if that's what the commission's intent was. And I want to make sure we're on the same page there.
It was my belief that the two bedrooms would be the two bedrooms in an accessory apartment. Not two bedrooms in the primary residence plus two bedrooms in the accessory apartment.
Well, keeping in mind that an accessory apartment by definition is only 600 square feet. So typically about a bedroom, you know, a bedroom and maybe a kitchen. So, you know, more like a studio. Uh, so there really wouldn't be any bedrooms there. So you, well, there's a bedroom, I suppose. So I guess one way to look at that then would be that that the two bedrooms would include that accessory apartment. Uh, so you'd have one bedroom, maybe in the primary or in the single-family dwelling unit, and then that you could rent out. And if you have an accessory apartment, that would count for your second uh, bedroom. Uh, or would, would, would we allow two bedrooms within the single-family dwelling unit plus the accessory apartment? I think that's the question. I think that's the question, Commissioner Brown. I don't know if I, if I articulated what you were trying to say there correctly or not.
My vote would be for a total of two bedrooms. My understanding and my vote would be as Carl describes it, two bedrooms plus the ADU. When they said two bedrooms, I was thinking that would be two bedrooms in the single-family dwelling. I, I wasn't thinking that would subsume the ADU. I think that might almost be two plus one. And I'm okay with the two plus one. I mean, it's, there is a, it's, it's like a small apartment. Sort of, very small. Is an ADU limited to 600 feet or some other measurement, Carl?
It is 600 square feet.
I got it.
And or Shannon?
I'm okay with the two bedrooms and the ADU. So essentially three bedrooms is what I think you'd be looking at, considering the ADU would probably be just a single bedroom itself. It does seem like a separate unit from two bedrooms within the single-family house.
I agree with Commissioner Bennett's comments.
So my recollection of the, that, of the discussion, well, I don't know that we discussed that issue specifically.
I don't think so.
But there was long discussion about two bedrooms and I thought the gist of that discussion was to put some kind I thought the gist of that discussion was to put some kind of a limit. On the total. Amount of extraneous traffic.
Yeah.
And so that's where I thought that restriction came in. And so it seems inconsistent. That we would say, I have a house that I could rent three bedrooms, but you're only saying I could rent two. But if I have an ADU, I can rent two of those bedrooms plus the ADU. Um, and so that doesn't seem consistent, so I think we either need to do one or the other. Uh, but I don't think we can have it both ways because, again, my understanding of the intent was. We were restricting. In the interest of preserving the fabric of neighborhoods and so on, all the things that we've discussed. And the issues that have been raised to, to try to limit. The numbers of guests on any given. Single family home on any given moment.
I think there also, you know, in this discussion, there's a, like, you know, there's also that distinction between the short term rental. And, uh, and a, and a bed and breakfast. And I kinda hesitate to bring this up, but I'm going to, that, you know, we still have a lodging level one. Uh, definition and a use. In the code that allows for someone to rent five bedrooms within their single family residential dwelling unit. Um, but likely subject to getting a conditional use permit, so it's different permitting. Um, and technically a different use. Uh, and so I think part of what we were doing with the two bedrooms was to also kind of make that. Distinguish, make that distinct, to distinguish those two uses a little bit. Uh, and, and also acknowledging that the short term rental as a type two permit would be, you know, easier. And a more, a little more streamlined process for someone who wants to do that and less intense use. As a less intense use in the community. Um, but also, we should also keep in mind that accessory apartments require a conditional use. To be established in, uh, in the R one zone in particular and other zones I. Don't have that right in front of me, but they. Um, they are, they do require a conditional use permit in the R one. Uh, so there's already some, um, process that someone has to go through in order to even get that, um, accessory apartment. Built on their, on their parcel, so you know, I, I'm just throwing out all the facts so that we have all, everything clear in front of us for the discussion.
So Larry, you'll be glad to know without a motion, we have seven minutes to resolve this.
Then we better do it quickly, eh? I like the concept of limiting, limiting it to two bedrooms, whether they're in the, one in the ADU and one in the home. Well, the, the, this kind of dovetails into another issue too, because if people rent out the entire house. Uh, that could conceivably be four or Carl was suggesting even five bedrooms depending on the size of the house. And, and then that brings into play the potential traffic problems, uh, that Greg was mentioning.
Yeah, I, I think we just have to keep in mind that the accessory apartment is a. Is a separate use. Established as a separate use on that parcel, you have your single family dwelling unit. And you have an accessory apartment, and the, the accessory apartment is going to be rented out in some manner, presumably almost always. That's why people have them, you know, in some cases it's a mother-in-law or something like that. Um, you know, so maybe for multi-generational living, but generally speaking, that's what people are. Getting an accessory apartment for, so they really are, you know, kind of distinct in that way, and I think including. The, in my opinion, including the accessory apartment is one of those bedrooms is a little inconsistent with that. Um, with the intent of what an accessory apartment. Means to a property or, or why someone, uh, goes through the process of having an accessory apartment on their property.
And by the definition of accessory apartment, they cannot be condominiumized or otherwise sold, so. With that, they would have to be rented out either long term or short term by nature of the definition.
What if we don't, uh, what if we exclude a? ADUs from our, our short term rental discussion period, I mean, what if we just don't talk about them? Is that, um, harming the overall intent of what we're doing here? We're trying to control the single family houses that get, you know, rented out to a lot of people. We, 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 I don't know, I'm just kind of thinking about the language.
Well, that is another thought, you know, we did, we eliminated. Apartments and boats and things like that from, you know, from this discussion by just going after single, you know, just talking about single family. Dwelling units and so that, you know, we could, we could simply remove accessory apartments from the definition.
Well, there are some ADUs in use for short term rentals at present in town. If, if. They came in to get a business license and a, a permit. What would you do?
Well, we wouldn't, they wouldn't meet the definition, so they wouldn't get a permit, it wouldn't be applicable, the permit wouldn't be applicable. To the accessory apartment and a business license could be issued, uh, just like it might be issued to, uh. Uh, a flotel, you know, or a boat, uh, something along those lines, if somebody wanted to come in and say, hey, we're, you know, I'm starting up this business, I'm gonna start renting out this boat as a short term rental. They can call it a short term rental, but it's not a short term rental in the city of Gig Harbor because it doesn't meet that definition, so it's a. It's a business, uh, I don't know how we would define it exactly, but. A live aboard, I suppose, is how we would define it.
Yeah, that was a bad suggestion on my part, I strike that on the record, no, whatever you call it, take it back.
Uh, you're unraveling the fabric of, of.
Don't wanna do that, not.
I think it's good that we're having this discussion about it because I think it is definitely something that will come up. Uh, you know, right now we say. Two. Number of rooms rented, the number of rooms rented shall be limited to. Bedrooms, we changed that, uh, to, but actually, let me, let me use Commissioner Brown's. Uh, the number, let's see, the number of rooms rented shall be limited to two bedrooms. Unless the rental period is within the ninety calendar days during which the entire dwelling unit may be rented. In that statement alone. We don't talk about accessory apartments at all. I mean, that, to me, that, that would be construed to read that we're talking about. Only the single family dwelling unit there. And that's why, you know, I'm bringing this up because I think, you know, we wanna be clear and, 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 and I wrote it. We wrote, we wrote it that way, um, in order to. Uh, with, with, with the full intent that accessory apartments would just be allowed outright as a short term rental. At all times. And I think it might be good that we even would specify further, if that's the direction we go, that we would wanna specify that further to say that the number of rooms. In the single family dwelling unit shall be limited. If that's the direction that we went, I think we'd wanna specify that more clearly, but that was the intent of that provision when we wrote it. We're at eight o'clock, Commissioner Huxman.
Okay, so, um. That requires a motion to continue the meeting, the, um. Feels like we're awfully close to the finish line, but, uh. There's some, a little bit of buffing the staff needs to do. So without a motion to continue the meeting and a, a motion could be for, you know, to continue the meeting for fifteen minutes, for example.
I'm, I move that we continue for fifteen minutes.
I'll second that. All those in favor of that motion, say aye.
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 Okay, any opposed, say nay? Okay. Alright, I know I can see your brains going here, but, but we need to, we needed to get this hashed out and, uh. We're not gonna hash it out through silence.
So is our concern about basically kind of three versus two about. Traffic, are we talking like vehicle traffic, because we've already. Um, gotten, we've already noted that we have to have off-street parking for all spaces, so. We're not concerned about vehicle parking in the three versus two because we've already required that they have parking, off-street parking for it. So what is the concern about the three versus two?
And, and Commissioner Bennett's a great point, I just wanted to note that, you know, we do require for an accessory apartment, we require. One off-street parking space, excuse me, one off-street parking space. Per accessory apartment in addition to the parking required for the primary dwelling unit, that's how the code reads now, so there's already an additional parking space. Included in their conditional use permit or however that accessory apartment gets permitted.
Oh, I, I would say that this discussion has only confirmed my thought that it should be. Two bedrooms in the primary unit plus the ADU. Which would then, as, as we look at it that way, would be three bedrooms in that kind of sense.
So if it's an ADU, would it be considered the bedroom, I mean, I was wondering if then back in. Seventeen point oh five oh C where we put in the word bedroom, if. Maybe we need to go back and make it be room, I mean, I don't, I don't understand, I don't know the definition of ADU, but. Is it considered the bedroom or is it considered? It's like a studio, a room, or is it a bedroom?
I'll read the definition, Commissioner Gray.
Okay.
Uh, accessory apartment means a residential unit of up to six hundred square feet. And that's, and that's, that's, uh, when we say residential unit, that's intentional because it's not a dwelling unit, it's a residential unit. Of up to six hundred square feet. With a functional kitchen, bath and outside entrance attached to or on the same parcel as a single family residence in a residential zone. Accessory apartment shall be under the same ownership as the primary residential unit with the owner living onsite in either unit. Accessory apartments shall not be condominiumized or otherwise sold separately.
So it, it's technically not a bedroom, so that goes back to my point that we might have to. Change back to the word room if indeed we were going to allow that instead of bedroom. I'm just trying to make this more confusing, no, not.
Well, I, I think that's a good point, Commissioner Gray, and I, that's why I was saying that I think if we, if we did go this direction, we'd wanna change C to be more explicit. Uh, that we were talking about, oh, we were talking about two bedrooms within the single family dwelling unit. So again, I mean, I think the, the intent of that statement is already, you could read into it. And exclude accessory apartments from that statement, but I think we need to be more explicit that that's what we're doing, if that's what we're doing.
That would, I think, I agree, that would help.
I agree that it needs to be probably say within the single family. Dwelling unit, two bedrooms within the one unit, would you add anything extra discussing the ADU? Saying that you can rent out the ADU also, or is that just gonna be a whole, or is that just implied? Or would you just add that to it, limited to two bedrooms within a single family dwelling? And one ADU or something like that, I'm not sure, or would that be an additional criteria?
Well. What we say in the definition is that, and where the short term rental of the entire single family dwelling unit is limited to no more than ninety days per calendar year. So I think there we're sort of implying that the accessory apartment is not included in that. Ninety days, therefore, it's included in the allowance, you, you are allowed to rent that out throughout the year. Later than in C, we have this restriction on the number, the actual number of rooms that can be rented otherwise in the single family dwelling unit.
I, I, I would say this captures the intent though. Because if, if the ADU is physically attached to the primary dwelling, the residential unit. Then the two bedrooms that can be rented out applies because it's, it's one physical building. If the ADU is, is a separate building on the property, then it stands alone. Uh, for the purposes of this ordinance as well.
Well, that's a, uh, that's kind of a different distinction, Commissioner Radbury, because like, you know, like I said, I mean. It, it is two uses, you know, even if that's accessory apartment is attached to the single family dwelling unit, it's still a separate use. That's been permitted independently. Of the single family dwelling. Uh, and therefore, I think, I think that gets that, I think it gets murkier if we try and, and make a distinction between an attached accessory apartment and a detached accessory apartment. And we would have to define that, uh, somewhere in this ordinance as well, so it would. And not that it can't be done, I, I'm not saying it's, I'm not saying that it's a bad idea, I think it just, um, we would just have to. We'd have to think about that a little bit more and where we would put that in this ordinance.
Could you, could you put in the, say, somewhere for the purpose, purposes of this ordinance? An ADU shall be considered a one bedroom unit.
And I think you would need to add occupancy limitations as well to adults and children max.
Right, that was my point, so that people couldn't pack six, you know, three couples, uh, into an ADU.
Exactly.
Uh, okay, and, and so then if that's the case, if we were to do that, then are we back to including the accessory apartment as one of the two bedrooms? Is that where we're going with that, two?
I think that, and what Greg said was that we didn't want to have that become a, a three person or whatever. Even probably even two, I mean, I think ADU is almost like a single, a, a single person residence. I, I think we could go with the two in the hot main house and let the ADU be the ADU, I mean, that's. If you're gonna do a night, rent for ninety days a full house, then you're gonna have plenty of people there anyway, so I don't think. Two bedrooms plus an ADU is gonna be any worse than a single, a full house rental in terms of numbers, so. And we really wanna encourage ADUs, that's, that's a pretty affordable option, and we don't wanna ever discourage people from doing that, I don't think. So I'm, I'm, I'm a two plus one guy, at least.
Okay, it sounds like Larry was also.
Correct, two plus one. I can go with that.
Okay. That's a consensus.
And we got that done in ten minutes. Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Chair.
All right. Uh. Let's see, I don't think we have anything on the old business and uh next, next business or next meeting.
Next meeting, Chair, and commissioners will be a public hearing, so uh staff will be preparing um. Draft ordinance to include these regulations uh as the vehicle for these regulations um. And uh presenting that to the public for a public comment. Uh, and then we would conduct the public hearing on June second. Commission can then deliberate and make a determination on whether or not they're ready to. Make a recommendation to City Council. Or not.
So is a public meeting begin at five or is it begin at six?
Six o'clock, Commissioner Grant.
Okay, thanks.
And it will be a Zoom meeting, am I correct in that?
That's correct, Commissioner Brown.
Kudos to all you guys and gals for hanging in there. This has been a, a journey.
Lots of good research, lots of good work. Okay. Uh, barring no further discussion, I am willing to entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Not all at once there. All those in favor, say aye.
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 The meeting is officially adjourned at eight thirteen. Carl, if you could stay on, I have a question.